The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I'd like to call, oh gosh, like to call the board meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next I'd ask Laura to read our mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Laura. Next we have a recognition, and at this point I'll ask Tim Flood, and he can bring all of the football players that are here tonight to be recognized forward. If you guys want to... Yes, all behind Tim. He's gonna be talking about you, so...
I'm taking my audience back.
Paul, good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Flood, I'm the administrator of district co-technical programming. I wanted to start with a quote tonight. Being an athlete is more than having a physical skills and being able to perform better than an opponent on a certain day. These traits are God-given gifts that you have no control over. Being a true athlete involves choices you make on things you do not have control over, effort and attitude. In other words, character issues. It's a quote by Bruce Brown. And I, we have here today, team, for the football programs from East High School and West High School, over the length of the season here, we've had several items that have come up on things that have showed their character and sportsmanship. Some quotes I have, the, from the West High School. It was a official's report. It was a WI Good Sportsmanship Report. And in this email, the official talks about how the West team remained positive throughout the game no matter the score, continued to play hard, and showed respect for us and their opponents. One specific example was, a West player came up to the official and said, "Thank you for refereeing our game tonight and for keeping the players of both teams safe. Please tell the other refs I said that." The official said he displayed character maturity beyond his years. A different game. It was an opposing coach email. And their, one of their athletes came up to the coach and said, although they were, talked about the game and how well they played, and said, you know, even though West was maybe not as talented as us, their athletes played significantly more resilient, more physical and relentless last night. He said there was an enormous change for the positive concerning the words and actions that go into your team's sportsmanship. For Green Bay East, you know, the sportsmanship and kindness, acts of kindness that they showed, at the end of one of the games a couple of weeks ago, as they were met at midfield to shake hands, there was a young man from the opposing team that is a special needs student who was in a wheelchair, who's non-verbal and non-mobile. He's the water boy for that team. And when they're going through the hand, shaking hands, some of the East players noticed that this young man was by himself and no one shook his hand, so they doubled back and they fist bumped and hand shook that young man too. And the mother of that young man was so proud of East High School, what they did, because it's never happened before for their son. So, I'd like to introduce, who's going first, Sean or John?
You're up, bud.
Alright, Sean Barron from Green Bay East.
Um, you know, I just, it's a tribute to the people at East. Our kids are great, I don't think people all know that, unless you're over there all the time and you work with them and you work with that staff. We have really, really good kids, really talented kids, that care, and we talk about all the time, we talk about, you know, just understanding how big, you know, how much bigger this all is than any one single person. And treating each other with respect, caring ourselves well in the community, in the school, in the hallways, and then on the field. And these guys do it to a T, and they bought right into that culture. Proud to say we had two students today, or two players today that were over at Sullivan Elementary. They taught a football 101 class to, to an ID classroom over there, and, you know, we've been involved in in the, in the run, at the city stadium run, and we did, we, how many backpacks did we fill that day? There was a million backpacks over at UWGB one day. So these kids always answered the bell, tried to give back to the community. We understand that, you know, it isn't all about football, okay, it's, you know, about growing as young men, and, you know, leaving somebody else better than when we met them, so that's what we work on over there, and, and we got the kids over there that I wish the rest of the community could see on a daily basis. And not so much the negative stuff, but come and check out our kids and see what, what we're dealing with there. But I appreciate all those guys for sure. Thanks.
Now I'd like to introduce John Saharsky from Green Bay West.
And, Coach, I couldn't have said it better myself. We face some of the same struggles, we see some of the exact same stuff. And exactly tackle what he's saying, we do it a little bit differently, we talk about the same mission. We want to get them ready for the community, ready for college, and, and ready to move on that way. And that's what we've done, to see the growth in these kiddos, from where they started to where they are now, and that they can live up to a standard, that they find a standard, and that they're all doing it together is just awesome. And I would love to see, and really I can't say it better than the words on those papers that were already said, but that is our mission, as well as the Green Bay school mission, and we want to see it live through these athletes, and it really is. So it is awesome. So thank you, and thank you for having us in here today.
And thank you for coming, I mean, it's just really great to hear these stories, and having lived at East High School as a parent for six, seven years, I think, my kids were there, I know exactly. And a former principal, so, and Andrew graduated from West High School, so, yeah, so, and, and a West parent, yes, and Rhonda is soon to be a West parent. Her child is at Franklin right now, so, anyway, we, we all are well familiar with, with both the schools, and, and couldn't be more prouder. I know it's not always easy when your scoreboard doesn't tell you what you wanted it to tell, but, but, you know, in the, in the game of life, what you're learning is, is going to serve you incredibly well in your future, and we're just really proud of the, of the people that you're becoming, and, and also just the football skills you're learning, because I know you've improved over the years, so... And?
Yeah, thank you. I am, I'm very, very gratified to hear all this. I'm not surprised, I'm not surprised one, you know, one little bit, obviously, you know, my heart is still there at East, having worked there as a principal for the number of years that I did, and I know the character of Mr. Saharsky, having known him since he was a very young man as well. Very, very proud of what you're doing, and I'm glad that we had the opportunity to bring you here to this meeting that the community will at least be able to see on video if, if nothing else. Thank you, guys, you really represented your schools, your families, and yourselves just marvelously, and I know you'll keep it up.
Go ahead.
You know, as I, I had the opportunity to share with some of the coaches from West High School, as a mother of young men, sometimes it's not about winning the game, it's about the character that you develop and build, and I want to thank the parents and, and the teachers and the coaches for recognizing that these young men are leaders and the future, and investing your time and talents in these young men is worth every single moment, as you can tell. And I've been blessed to get comments in the community, phone calls from community members, to talk about what fine young men we have at Green Bay East and Green Bay West, so kudos to you, and congratulations, and I am just very, very, very pleased that you joined us tonight, so we could honor you and recognize you. And, oh, by the way, I did get an email from someone who told me one of the things that East High School team, they were there to watch you play, a group of students from the Y, from Eisenhower, and they were most impressed with being part of the East High School community that night, and they even got to be part of a dance-off and do the banana cheer for you, so just saying. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you get pictures? Okay.
It's so cool.
Yes, it is. Gosh, it's gonna cry.
So, before we move forward with our...
They probably had practice time already, too, they're probably exhausted.
Or is their season done? It might be done, oh, okay. Just a reminder that members of the public can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by going to our website at www.gbaps.org. If you click on "Our District" along the top, and then "Board of Education" on the left, and on that left menu, you'll find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. And now's our time for our open forum. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the board this evening? Alright, we have, no one to speak, would like to speak before the board. If we do, we do also, in addition to this open forum, agenda opportunity permit public participation during agenda items that we will be voting on as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. And lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members are prohibited. Next we have our roll call, Sandy?
Becker?
Here.
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 McCoy?
Here.
Sitnikoff?
Here.
Shelton?
Excused?
Warren?
Here.
Barbian?
Here.
We have six board members present tonight, one excused. We're also joined at the table by Janie Barbian, who's president of Inter-City Student Council, she's from West High School. And to my far left is Sandy Heller, the Board Executive Assistant, and to my left, Dr. Michelle Lang and Felder, Superintendent. How about entertain the first motion for under minutes?
Move that to the minutes of the regular board meeting dated September 17, 2018. Special board meeting is dated September 19, 2018. October 1st, 2018, 8:30 a.m., and October 1st, 2018, 5:25 p.m., and special board meeting closed session dated October 1st, 2018. As presented, be approved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The meetings have been approved. Next we have our monitoring reports, that will be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
Okay, we're going to be talking about our International Baccalaureate Monitoring Report.
Thank you for having us, and joining me at the table are Lori Pita, Jackie Hauser, and Chris Wood, representing International Baccalaureate, as well as our personalized pathways. We also have a number of people from their teams, if you'd like to stand, from Franklin.
Jen Burgraf, IB Coordinator for the Middle Years Program. Shannon Preston, from West, as the IB Coordinator for DP. And Renee Anderson, IB Coordinator for the Middle Years Program, nine and 10 at West.
And anybody from Chapel, and we also have Joe Booker from East High School, representing City Stadium Automotive, if we have particular questions. Michelle Jacobson was unable to attend tonight, she's taking part in the training in Milwaukee, and she's on her way back, but we will do our best to answer questions on her behalf. So... The question is, why is the remote working? Could you click for me?
It's not clicking, great.
Didn't click. Sorry.
My mouse?
There we go. Okay, the big question, besides why is the mouse not working, is why are we here? To provide the Board of Education with an overview of our personalized pathways and international baccalaureate programming, as well as next steps for sustainability. In thinking about our personalized pathways, it's important that a district works very hard at its universal instruction, and we've talked about that many times, but it's also important that we have alternative methods, different ways that students can personalize their own learning, and take part in deeply enriching opportunities that aren't normally part of our everyday programming, that's part of our universal. That gives us an opportunity not only to help individual students excel, but for us to look at this as site for incubation of new ideas, when we think about what's working in international baccalaureate, what's working in certain personalized pathways, there's definitely a transfer back to the universal. And it's important that we support all of these in a true, robust manner. And as we said with personalized pathways, we develop clear, engaging, and rigorous pathways to college, career, and community readiness that respond to each student's needs, encouraging their unique talents.
So I have been blessed for the last, I think this is my eighth year, to be able to work on behalf of the school district to develop personalized pathways in a number of different areas, and I want to thank you for that, because I have the great job of being able to link the classroom to college and to the world of work. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about, those of you that know me, three of my babies, that I had the good fortune of being able to work with school and district staff to develop. Tonight I'm going to talk to you about BayLink Manufacturing, Bridges Construction and Renovation, and City Stadium Automotive. So as, as John finds the, the right touch, all of these programs are possible because of a working relationship that we have with business and industry post-secondary institutions, and also community-based organizations who also support their students being involved in these programs. One of the things that we really believe in is that Green Bay Public Schools is really a campus with 42 different sites on our campus. So while these programs are located at certain high schools within our district, they are open for all students within the Green Bay area public school district. The other thing that's important for us to recognize is that the knowledge and skills our students are learning in these programs are aligned to the current labor market, and are all done in support of, or by support from our community partners. So I am proud to share with you that BayLink Manufacturing is celebrating this year five years of being in business. So, as some of you may know, over half of the businesses that are started don't make it after the first year. So we are really proud of our students and staff at West High School for the fact that BayLink is in its fifth year. As you may know, it's a high-precision manufacturing learning lab, and we continue to grow the different knowledge and skills that our students are able to use as they work for real-life customers. It also helps to prepare students for a two- or a four-year education, as well as careers in the military. Students earn three high school credits, at the same time they also have the opportunity to earn five college credits. In the la, this is our third year now that we have two shifts for BayLink. In the past, it used to be a three-hour block in the afternoon. This is our third year where we have a two-hour shift in the morning and a two-hour shift in the afternoon. We have 18 students currently enrolled, that's probably one of the highest numbers that we have had involved in this program. The other thing that makes BayLink and the other three, the other two programs really unique is that we have an authentic application and interview process, so students, just like when they go out into the real world, they actually fill out an application and go through an interview process with our business partners. So that's kind of cool for them, scary, but cool. The thing that's unique about BayLink is our students, because of the money that they earn working for their different customers, they also earn a scholarship. So any student that successfully completes BayLink, right now earns a $250 scholarship, but because we are increasing our revenue, we are now in the process of working with financial advisor on how we could increase the potential scholarship for those students. And our average income at BayLink is between $40,000 and $50,000 a year, so for a little, a little business in the back of West High School, they do a really, really great job, and all of that revenue is reinvested back into the program. And they're, you know, I'm embarrassed to say that after five years, I still refer to things as widgets, but these are some really cool parts that they make, but I think the important thing is to look at the customer list. Georgia Pacific, Green Bay Police Department's SWAT team, Hudson Sharp, KI, Clem Tank Lines, Lindquist Machine Corporation, Nature's Way, NWTC, SAS Forks, New Plastics, and OEL. And we are continuing to grow our customer base, we are having an open house for all of our old and potential new customers on October 30th, with the goal of increasing our customer base and letting our current customers know how much we appreciate them being a part of BayLink. And that is all facilitated by our students. So as part of the skills that they're learning, they're learning a lot of those employability skills as well, how to work with a customer, so... Bridges Construction and Renovation, those of you that have been around for a while know that that actually started out as the home construction program. And thanks to the brilliance of our students and Lori Blakesley, it was branded in 2015 as Bridges Construction and Renovation. And that really came from our students wanting some kind of name that shared that link between the east and the west side, because again, this program is available to all students in the Green Bay area public school district. This has been a really successful program, and we are now in our sixth year of offering this to our students. The key to, I think, our success has been that Neighbor Works has a commitment from a private donor to provide the resources for our students to build a house for 10 years. So we are in year number three of that 10-year promise, and they're actually building the house, I want to give you the exact address, because I'd love for you to drive by, at 720 North Broadway. So, you know, I, I'm more of a landmark person, right past the gas station on the corner, which happens to be right across the street from the house they built two years ago. So they are really working on refurbishing our neighborhoods in Green Bay. We do have a new instructor this year who is doing a great job. The capacity we have is 12 students, we have 10 right now because two of them had to withdraw. So the other thing that this program has is an active advisory team, and because of our work with that advisory team, they are now starting the NEW Construction Alliance. So if you're familiar with the NEW Manufacturing Alliance, they are now starting the NEW Construction Alliance. So it's been a very successful program for us. This is one program we'd like to look for opportunities to grow, and potentially maybe do another shift for them as well, if we can get, get the house. And then last but not least is City Stadium Automotive. Tomorrow, we will be celebrating the third anniversary of our grand opening. So City Stadium Automotive, for those of you, again, that know the old East High School, was, was kind of an old-fashioned auto tech lab, and through some great sponsorships and a lot of business influence, City Stadium Automotive looks just like any other automotive shop in Green Bay, and also mirrors what we have at NWTC. We changed the program last year in that we now offer, with the help of NWTC, an automotive technician program, where students earn 27 credits. It's a two-year commitment, so their junior and senior year, they're involved in this program. And then, when they get to NWTC, they have their first year of college done, so they actually start in their second year in the automotive technician program. In 2018, 2019, and I thank Joe Booker for these numbers, the numbers grew by 23% in East and Preble. We have 12 students in Vehicle Service 2 and eight students in Vehicle Service 3, those are the students that are earning college credit through NWTC. We talked about the diploma, students are also eligible to take the ASE certification exams, and again, we have a very active advisory team. So you've heard me say that three times, these advisory teams from our business and industry partners are really key to us sustaining these programs. Was asked to talk just a little bit about next steps. One of the things that's really important to us at BayLink is we need to have a, an accounting or financial plan that mirrors what happens in the real world, and I think we finally nailed it down this year. We actually have a co-op student that is working with the bookkeeper, who is an accountant, on how we're going to look at our finances. With bridges, as I mentioned, we would like to increase the numbers if we could. We also are getting a new construction trailer, thanks to our sponsors. And then lastly, with City Stadium Automotive, we'd love to look at how to expand that program as well. So I think the good news for all of these programs is we built them, we implemented them, we've not only sustained them, but they're all at a point now where we'd like to continue to grow them.
So again, these are important pathways within our district. It's important that we continue to support them and allow them to flourish. And something that is pathway-like to a degree, but, but not a pathway, is our international baccalaureate programming. And that begins with elementary, proceeds through the middle years, and onto the diploma program. And we'll hear more from Jackie and Chris.
So we are excited in the IB world, because we are now an official continuum as of, I think, April or May?
May.
June? Right, June, and somewhere. So we are an official continuum, so that has been a lot of hard work. I know the coordinators at the high school have had to work really hard to make sure everything was put in place for us to get authorized. So I started out at the elementary levels with a primary years program. We authorized in 2012. We have had an evaluation visit a couple of years ago, where they come back to see how we're doing and if we're implementing with fidelity. We offer Spanish. We are pretty excited, because at this point, we have about 50% of our fifth grade students that pass on to Franklin and test out a Spanish one, so are able to go into Spanish II, which is really exciting. We're kind of on that cusp of having some more students in there, but we, we're really excited with that piece of it. So when IB came a couple of years ago, we were very excited. The program is really rigorous to implement with lots of pieces that have to be in place, and we were excited when they left with 10 accommodations, where we exceeded expectations of where we were in the process at that point that they don't expect, so we were excited about that, and we were super thrilled that we didn't have any matters that needed to be addressed. The big thing that we wanted to show some of the similarities with our program, so at, at Chapel, our students are required to do an exhibition project, which is a culmination of their IB PYP, or the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. It's a culmination of their learning at those primary years level. And several of you are mentors, which I'm super excited about, and anyone else interested, you are welcome to come. There's a few of you haven't hit up yet, so I'll talk to you guys later, but it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to really see kids go through the process of finding a passion and finding out what they can do at their level to do, take action on that, whether that be just spreading some information, possibly taking aid or activism in some capacity, and sharing that knowledge with others around, and then they take all of that information to Jackie and to the Franklin staff.
So, from Chris and the Chapel staff, they come to us at Franklin, as well as the other six elementary schools. We were authorized in 2013, and because every five years there is an evaluation, we were evaluated actually last year in April, several of you came in and spoke to the IB evaluators, so we appreciate that. Everybody at Franklin is part of the Middle Years Program, everybody six through eight is part of the
Everybody at Franklin is part of the middle years program. Everybody six through eight is part of the program. When they did come in to evaluate us in April, very similar to what Chris had, we had eleven commendations from them that, where they felt we were exceeding in certain areas and zero matters to be addressed as well. So then they give you your report and share with you some things to continue to grow upon for the next five years. So those are things we're taking back now and continuing to build upon in our professional learning sessions. We have students that are coming in this year, whether it be from Chapel. Some are coming in at a Spanish Two. Because we have Jackson's bilingual program, we have actually kids this year at Franklin coming in as sixth graders as Spanish Three. So we will be now needing to figure out Spanish Four for some of our students next year in seventh grade. We offer Spanish and French, but because we offer Spanish every day, unlike the other schools, we are as well in seventh and eighth grade able to give high school credits. So we have many students leaving Franklin with two credits in foreign language. So we, last year, had a hundred and thirty-two eighth graders that left our building, out of a class of a little over two hundred that received high school credit for language acquisition. So that's something that we're very proud of at Franklin. When they come from Chris and their exhibition project, they take their learning from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And at Franklin, we do a community project. All of our eighth graders are required to do a project either by themselves or with a group of students, up to three students. And they're doing something very similar, but building upon the skills from elementary and finding a project that they can do as services action, whether that be advocating for something, doing something indirectly or directly to meet a need in our community. And whatever community the kids feel that is, whether it be Franklin Middle School, their neighborhood, Green Bay, Wisconsin, the world, whatever. And then they present their projects in May. And if you haven't seen it, we'll be sending you an invite. If you would, we'd love to have you come and see the projects that the kids put together in their presentations.
Andrew.
Can you tell me the, with the... And the, well, I guess this will, this also applied to the previous slide. And the commendations and the matters to be addressed. So we had ten, ten commendations, zero to be addressed, and we've got a thirteen and one coming up. Is that a, is that a common thing to see on an IB report, or is that not common to have such a strong ratio?
I think the matters to be addressed, so in IB world, those are things that you need to address within a certain, usually a relatively short timeline. And if those things are not addressed, it may jeopardize your authorization at that point. So I think there definitely are situations where schools have matters to be addressed. There's not a set number. I don't think we could do any research, Andrew, other than if we were to call up some of the schools to ask how many commendations they receive. There are practices and standards at each of our level that are, I'm not sure the exact number. Around, yeah, that's what I was just going to guess, about a hundred practices and standards that we are responsible for implementing. And so they don't touch on every one of those. So out of those standards and practices, they felt that in ten of those areas, or eleven of those areas, we excelled beyond where they thought we would be at that first evaluation visit.
I think if I remember correctly, and I know, unless it's different for high school, but I'm guessing probably there's, I've, I've heard that they're rather, tend to be a little, a little on the stingy side of the commendations. And to see, to see double digits, I, I think to get, to get a lot of, a lot of okay and zero or one to be addressed in two or three commendations, I, I think schools of, I've heard schools often feel pretty great about that, and you don't see the double digits happening very often. So that's, that's nice to see here.
Question specific to the Spanish curriculum, and I should remember this, but I don't. Spanish One and Two at the middle school, does that equate to Spanish One at the high school if they complete One and Two at middle school?
For us, it does. For other schools, it's a little bit different, because we do everyday classes, where most of the other middle schools are doing every other day. They do more like a Spanish A and a Spanish B. We do One and Two, which are equivalent to One and Two at the high school.
But the U S.
Yep.
Your, your One and Two are equivalent to One and Two at the high school?
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Then they know the high school is ready for a Spanish.
For Three.
Spanish Three, and then they'll go with the two high school credits on their transcripts.
Whereas our other middle schools go with ready for Spanish Two, because they have a Spanish One and those two.
Correct.
Thinking of our dual-language programming, which also feeds into Franklin and adds an interesting dynamic, we'll have even more advanced students that will be coming through and possibly looking at pre-AP or possibly even AP courses by the end of eighth grade.
We're looking at already at the end of this month, having a conversation with teaching and learning around the fact that we will need a Spanish Four next year at Franklin.
So in the, in the middle schools where it's not everyday Spanish instruction, then they do an IB that's equivalent to One?
Yes, correct.
Over two years.
So you're actually taking high school Spanish One in, in Franklin?
Yep.
And our other middle schools are taking high school Spanish One, except it takes them two years to acquire that credit.
Correct.
Does it get credit for their Spanish One, too?
If they do A and, A and B, yeah.
So taking a look at the high school portion of the middle years program, that was, the original authorization was in 2018. Covers grades nine and 10. Again, it's a school-wide program, thirteen commendations and one matter to be addressed. And all 10th graders, as we said, must complete that personalized project. So looking at the, the second portion of high school, that's the diploma portion of the International Baccalaureate Programming. And that was the first programming that we had, that was originally authorized in 2012. And the documents for, for the review, as you know, goes through a cyclical review, are due this December. And I know the team has been working diligently on it, and they will be receiving likely many commendations and very few matters to be addressed, fingers crossed. But that covers grades 11 and 12. And of those, of the, of that programming, thirty, thirty-six percent of full diploma candidates in the last five years were awarded a diploma. So when we say a diploma, we're talking about an IB diploma. Many of them graduate, of course, high percentage, but that's what the one, those are the students that receive the specialized diploma. And seventy-five percent of course candidates in the last five years passed with a four or better, which is a really high ranking for, for those students.
Brenda.
Brenda.
So we have, we are, out of all of the diploma students, thirty-six percent met the criteria to earn the diploma. So, so what are the reasons why other students may not actually acquire that diploma? I know there's lots of steps to earning that diploma.
Sure. And I think our, our team could probably address that.
Like Jamie's ready to address it.
Jamie's ready.
I'm an IB full diploma candidate right now. I'm in my second year of it. So we have a number of assessments that we have to perform and meet certain standards for. So we have internal assessments, which are graded by our teachers, but a sampling goes to IB. So we have to complete all of those with a certain grade. And we have external assessments, which are kind of like the AP test. And we have to get a certain amount of points with that. And for IB diploma candidates, we have to complete our CAS hours and experiences, which is community service and other activities that focus on balance and open-mindedness. A CAS project, which is something that we create, a project that we create to help the community. We have to write our extended essay, which is a four thousand-word paper on a topic of our choosing. So we choose our topic, our inquiry question, and write a paper that's given to IB and graded. And we have to complete Theory of Knowledge, which is a two-semester philosophy class. It's in that, and our project within that, we have to pass.
So what are the most common obstacles to acquiring your diploma if you're in the program? If you, why don't you come forward? Because you'll be sure to want to be on TV, so. So if you have, so a thirty-six pass rate, obviously this is a difficult endeavor to get the whole thing. So what are the most common obstacles that prevent students from achieving that diploma certificate?
Well, the first part, the first part is that West, unlike most of the high schools in the state, we do not have an admission process. So we will accept anyone in our math courses. To be successful, they do have to have completed geometry. It's definitely helpful in those advanced math classes. But we've had students that have just completed Algebra One. If they're willing to take, you know, geometry in the summer or something like that, we're willing to work with those students. So most high schools in the state have an application process. You have to have a minimum GPA, so on and so forth. We don't. So because of that, and if you expand the net.
Sure.
That, that's what's going to happen. Looking at some of the statistics, you know, before my time as a coordinator here, we had students that maybe didn't complete their CAS because it's, you know, about a hundred and fifty additional hours outside of the classroom. Maybe they completed their extended essay again, done outside of the classroom, but it didn't pass, things like that.
Okay. So it's probably all over the board then, yeah, as to what.
I think some people partake in, in some of the IB courses as more of an exploratory piece rather than with full intention of going through to, to the deepest degree. So there are students that partake in the International Baccalaureate Programming, as well as the Advanced Placement Programming, and end up starting something and then go, still going through very advanced coursework, but taking a somewhat different track. But that is something that we want to focus on in the coming years, is really helping students see the greater advantages of the IB programming. And actually, if you, if, if we look at the, the next slide, oh, go ahead.
Just a quick, well, are we seeing, the thirty-six percent is over the last five years. Are we seeing an increase per year?
Yes.
I mean, have, there was a greater percentage this past year who were successful than early, or?
Last year, we had eight full diploma candidates and five received it.
Okay.
And then, so the other exciting piece is that, so our first group of kids that started with us, they're just freshmen this year. And so we haven't even, I mean, it takes a long time for the kids to get through that have really received the entire IB PYP with us, and then through Jackie. So they are freshmen this year. So we're hoping that that will increase those numbers and that success rate, because our kids learn differently going through the IB program. And, and having this from 4K all the way through should really help some of those kids be successful.
We also are seeing our candidate numbers go up. So currently, we have four senior candidates. Jamie is one of them. Our junior candidates, we have twenty. So that's a pretty big jump.
Having attended your celebration every year at the end, you have a lot of students who start with you. Freshmen, sophomores, you start, and they're, they're moving in that direction. Are there specific reasons you think they're not following that path to a full diploma? Or, do you see what I'm saying?
Sure.
Because you, there are many, many that receive sort of awards or whatever at, at that celebration. So I know there's a lot, and you watch it winnow and winnow. Just curious how that, how, where students drop off and why. Because obviously, when they're, when they're, they're ready to go, wouldn't they come?
So we have, so the, the diploma program is all of your classes are IB.
Right.
Along with all those extra requirements, we also have the certificate program.
Certificate program, yeah.
Yeah, so they're allowed, they're able to take as many or as few classes as they want. So we have a lot higher numbers in that than full diploma. Because full diploma is like equating a student taking full, all AP courses for two years.
Very rigorous.
And it's, it's, it's a very rigorous course, so the numbers are generally lower than what you're going to see in the certificate course.
I think just also, it's hard. So, and not to, to give such a simple answer, but it's, it's, it is, it's incredibly rigorous. So I think that that can be intimidating. We also have competition, you know, through other turbocharge options. There, there is competition. So we are obviously competing with other classes within our building and trying to talk about why we're so great and why.
But we're encouraging.
Yes, absolutely.
And actually, one of our, the, the slide after next shows some of our encouragement efforts related to marketing.
So question for, for kids who are maybe in that middle area, who they know it's hard, they want to be challenged, but maybe they're not really as motivated or they don't have the support at home. How are you able to help support them?
Through, one of the reasons why we, i- if someone is out of our, our home area, we would like them to come, like, we've had numerous DaVinci parents, for example, and their students are coming. We want them to start at the ninth grade, so they can get exposed to IB inquiry-type learning and get to know, all of our DP teachers teach, our NYPD teachers as well, they teach ninth and 10th grade. So we have that. We try, to the best of our ability, protect the fifth-hour lunch. All of our DP teachers have fifth-hour lunch off, except for our music teacher that has to do with a performance piece with DP Music. And most of our DP students, whether they be full diploma or course certificate, we try to protect that fifth-hour lunch, so that way I'm always available in my room. I have students coming for various reasons, Jamie knows this. And so they can go to their other teachers for help as well. So we, we try and definitely have that support piece, because it is incredibly rigorous to support them if they don't have it at home, or even if they do. Just, you know, parents come to our, our meetings and they have all these IB acronyms that get thrown at you all, and they don't, you know, quite understand what they're doing. So it's, I think, helpful to get that support at school.
Thank you. And really, as we can see, the, the work, the hard work that is being done pays off quite literally in scholarships. And we've had an increasing number of, of students receiving college, college scholarships, as well as an increasing award amounts from twenty, I'm sorry, thirty-nine students receiving two hundred and nineteen thousand in scholarships in 2011, 12, to this past year, sixty-four students receiving seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars in scholarships. So it, a lot of, a lot of the schools that are looking for, you know, if we're looking for an IB or very, an Ivy League school, other schools that are, that are harder to get in, having the IB diploma behind your, your application adds a lot of weight to that process. So if it is such a great program, and if it is such a great opportunity for, for kids in rigorous learning, what is it that we're doing to promote it? And we have, have some information here related to what we're doing. We're looking at increasing the enrollment in the full diploma program. We're looking at increasing enrollment in the IB course programs, as well as first students that have had an opportunity to have a full continuum in their sophomore year. We do have some challenges, however, and those are mobility of students and, as we said before, completion of diploma program level with dual credit, some of that, that competition, but then also the, the challenges in the rigorous material there. Is there anything you'd add? I think as well, having an administrative team at West that is very dedicated to International Baccalaureate. Having, when we hired for the new principal a year and a half ago, we wanted to make sure we had somebody with international baccalaureate experience. And having Michelle Jacobson come on team has been an important part of, of working with the group and sustaining those efforts. And also, when you go through a review process, and I'm sure you can reflect on this, it's very intense and it really, there's a great deal of introspection, deep introspection as far as what programming you have in place and where are the strengths and weaknesses of that program, and how can you improve. So I, I believe, and the team believes, that this is an important opportunity for us as well to reinvigorate the good work that's being done with International Baccalaureate at the high school level.
And for all of them, it's about an eighteen-month self-study process that we go through before we even turn in our paperwork for that evaluation visit. So we look at all those hundred standards and practices that are expected of us, and we look to see how are we doing those, how are they working? We try to evaluate them in whatever capacity we can. And then we create action plans that will sustain us for the next five years until they come back again for another evaluation visit. So very excellent work, but there, there's a lot that goes in the process.
Other marketing end of it, do you have anyone going into DaVinci, maybe throughout maybe the winter portion of the year, to ask parents if they want to come in and talk about the program? Because I know I have friends whose kids are at DaVinci and they're still. and they're still trying to weigh their high school options out. And just to explain to them a bit about the program to maybe...
Yes, DaVinci hosts, I wanna say it's in the beginning of November, but I could be wrong. They host a, almost like, yeah, it's a transition night. All the high schooler, high school principals attend and basically sell their school. I went two years ago, last year, I went with Mark Clayton two years ago. Last year, it was Ms. Jacobson and she brought one of our DP teachers.
So then, did they get pretty deep into the discussion on IB in general?
I believe our presentation usually is about five to seven minutes. So probably not as deep as we would like.
Yeah, because I think that if they were able to fully understand what the options are and what that looks like.
Well, some of it, I know one, a friend of mine's child, they did a shadowing day. He was, he was weighing two different schools and he was able to spend...
Yes. Our shadows, what we do with them is we, when they're interested, they contact us and we have them shadow for an entire day. The, our IB counselor and I meet them in the mornings. They spend about half a day, depending on their interest, depends if it's morning or afternoon, spend half a day with one of our full diploma students and then spends the other half with one of our ninth graders so they can see, you know, not just what it looks like at a twelfth grade level, but also what they would be seeing the next year. And then we meet with the, the families and look over what their four-year plan is and get into a more tailored, specific approach to their, their four years at West.
Also, our teaching and learning team is working with Tammy Van Dyke. There's a number of us, as well as Dr. Glenn Stramp, on producing a survey for the DaVinci parents based on what their needs are. What are their transitional needs? Because we, we try and reach out and we have informal ways of measuring that, but we really wanna specifically ask those questions, what, what supports are needed. Some of the, the things that were indicated through past focus groups were more individualized support from our school counselors related to application to IB League. So that, that's something that we wanna make sure that at each of our high schools, we're, we're giving consideration of that. But our, our intention is that we will be surveying our, our parents prior to the November parent meeting to ascertain more detail related to what their transition needs are. And then we'll be continuing that conversation at that meeting and beyond. Because we really do, when we have a myriad of personalized pathways and programming available to students, we wanna make sure that, that everybody who might be interested in those opportunities is able to access that. And I also know Lori Blakesley produces a, a very vibrant document that, that documents the different types of programming that we have that, that will be shared as well so that there's further impact and, and ability to influence parents and, and allow them to access the program we have.
So now we're talking about DaVinci, does anyone go into Alda Leopold?
We've offered. Yeah, we've offered to go, we just haven't been invited.
I think it, it might be interesting to, to think about that, that middle-level transition. And I can work with Dr. Wigan to discuss what we might do to, to expand in that area. Because really, if you're not part of the IB stream coming from Chapel to Franklin to West, in order for you to know about it, we don't want people to have to, to be too active in seeking it out. We want it to be something that's there. And as you mentioned previously, sometimes the acronyms and, and nature of IB can, if you, if you're not as familiar with the system or as, as comfortable with the schooling, can, can be intimidating. And so we wanna make sure that it's a, it's a open handout to any parents and students that, that are interested in such program.
That being said, I would tap into the private systems as well. I'm very impressed with the fact that they can, someone can come from Franklin with two credits of high school Spanish. I think that word needs to get out, that, you know, hit them at the fifth grade level.
I think there are amazing opportunities with this and as well as the work we're doing with Turbocharge. Thinking of our dual credit options with our goal of every student receiving fifteen credits before they graduate from, from high school. When we achieve that goal, that will be putting us on a, a very positive path, which we're already started down, but it will allow parents to have greater access to their kids for university and for the students to, to be better prepared.
Just one more, you've mentioned the Turbocharge thing. It's a shame that we're creating competition within our own school. And I'm not certain how IB works in terms of introducing new courses. Is there any way that some of the dual credit courses could become IB courses?
I think there, there are challenges in doing so because of the, basically, to meet, to meet the standards, needs of two different masters can be difficult, if not impossible. Because there are certain requirements that IB is...
I don't know if IB could put their twist on it.
There's a period level as far as what they're expecting and then there's also from the Higher Learning Commission directives on what we need there.
Okay.
Couple of things, just, just, we've had, I know we've had students who were in, there was a student who was in BayLink, who also was part of IB, who also was part of two music programs. So, it's, it, it can be done. And I know West has done a really great job of trying to accommodate a very diverse portfolio for a student and, and that's something that should be applauded. Speaking of applause, these women who sit before us have really worked tremendously to transform the opportunities for our kids. And I, I see that every day. And when I, when you see the culmination of the students who have participated in the IB program in that celebration, it is very clear to me that there is a very special thing going on there where you start to see that, that it becomes a cohort of learners who really are seeing the world very broadly. And you hear it in their speeches and you hear it and see it in their projects. You can see it in the eighth graders' projects and been fortunate to see that. So, it is, it is not always well-known. And I think that's what I'm hearing too, is that not everybody knows what opportunities are there, whether it be personalized pathways, whether it be IB, whether it be Turbocharge. And so it's really, how do we create the important opportunities that our children have and have been afforded with a lot of hard work on the parts of many? So, thank you for your work.
Just one more comment. I had the opportunity to sit in on the City Stadium Board meeting this past week and was very impressed with the business leaders and how they were conducting. In fact, they conducted the board meeting. And I have to tell you Lori, that the common denominator with these three programs is you. And that these business people really appreciate working with you.
Thank you. I don't do it by myself.
No, I know you don't, but, we talked about you. Just saying.
So I was an Alda Leopold parent a few years ago. And I have developed some relationships with people there, still have their, their kids there. And they've reached out to me quite a bit about where they should think about going to high school. So I think if you could get in, there would be a really good thing.
I think that'd be a great idea. Very important for Alda Leopold and all schools. There, there are a number of other marketing efforts that we have in place when we look at different media. We look at web, web presence for each program. We have social media accounts for BayLink Manufacturing as well as Bridges Construction. We have Facebook advertising in English and Spanish. We have promotion on local television, thinking about some of the programs, Living with Amy, Local Five Live, various videos we've produced, online advertising, brochures, events such as open houses. You know, we can, we can expand that, but that is something that we do. Signage, thinking about the individual signage and we've, we've really, thanks to Mr. Stangle and others, we've really worked hard to make the IB signage more prominent so that when people come, that it's not a, it's not a mystery as to what the school is offering. Also, the educational options brochure, materials that Lori produces that I mentioned, as well as articles in Education Connection. We have our billboards that we will be doing advertising on as well as social media posts on district and school sites. So, those are some of the things we do to market our individualized programming through pathways and IB. And we thank you for your time.
Just have one more thing. So this affects me personally that I have an nephew with his home school with me. His, his peer. So he went to DaVinci and when it came time for high school, they visited a lot of high schools. They're at West now for the IB program. And when I asked my sister, what was the deciding factor for you? She said, because they really want him there. Like, that made, that made the decision easy. They showed in multiple ways that they really wanted him there. So, I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the team.
That's it.
Next we have our superintendent's update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Lusso.
Sure, thank you. I'll begin with the calendar. October set, the October and November calendar. October seventeenth, just a reminder again of our public engagement session regarding the budget. And that's October seventeenth at six o'clock in the boardroom. And I'm sure these are posted as well. Then October twenty-sixth is fall recess coming up, October twenty-ninth. Another public hearing and special board meeting to adopt the district budget, again, October twenty-ninth. November fifth is the teaching and learning work session meeting, immediately followed by the organizational support work session meeting here in the boardroom. And then we have a retreat on November seventh, beginning of five o'clock. And then November nineteenth is a regular board meeting. And then we look at Thanksgiving recess, the twenty-second and twenty-third. So that is the calendar coming up. I just, I brought along some handouts for you. The next item I have is just a very high-level briefing for Achee Brown County. And somewhere in my... I know we've got the infographs on the, on the overhead up there. Sandy printed them for me, so I have just a few. No, this, that's just one. I had them all ready to go, but I'll make sure you get those before we go there. Oh, here they are. She was so kind to do that. One of the things that people may have forgotten about because it's been relatively quiet is the efforts through Achee Brown County. Achee Brown County was established in two thousand and fourteen. It is our Cradle to Career Community Initiative. And there are a number of initiatives. Tonight, I'm just gonna highlight two. And I see Mary Close here from Achee Brown County, who is working on research and often works closely with Dr. Stramp on the research. And I'm gonna just highlight a couple of areas. There are, for, from Achee Brown County, six outcomes. Tonight, I'm gonna be speaking directly about two of them. Outcome one, which is ages prenatal to five and outcome two, ages five to eighteen. Outcome one really is focused in on a hundred percent of the children are ready for school. Often, we hear about early childhood and the recognition that the investments in early childhood, not only here in Brown County but across the state, may not be getting the results that we need. And we know that when children are very well-prepared for school, the outcome is going to be very different than a child who may not have had resource or opportunity to engage in kinds of learning that some students have, whether it be social, emotional kinds of opportunities or even letter recognition, number recognition. It was just a, it was prior to even Achee Brown County that we went to United Way and had a conversation with United Way, Stephen Miller, Terry Williams and myself, to talk about what the Community Partnership for Children was doing. Whole group of agencies here in Brown County to say, please come and help us. We see children who are entering school who have not had the resources of support that some children need and so forth. And it came and stemmed from conversations with teachers who said, you know, we have children who come to us who don't have letter recognition or number recognition, but probably the most difficult and challenging is even the small motor skills aren't developed because they've never held a pencil or a crayon or skipped or jumped. And so, as a result of that, we started those conversations. Then we started the Cradle to Career Initiative to move us forward. The two outcome areas that you have handouts for, one of them is the early childhood focus and that early childhood system of care. Up to this point, there's been a lot of stops and starts in this area with a lot of really informed people talking about what best practices are and looking at the research around how important it is for children to have the services and supports they need for success. So here's where we are today. We're looking at a universal developmental screening that all three of our hospital systems have agreed to do collectively to refer children to local services and help those families. There are many, many clinics already in Brown County that do that, but to have that agreement from all three systems, Prebey, Out, Bellin and Aurora, is, is now where we're headed to make sure that the clinics use a, a universal screening tool to determine if a child needs some additional supports or help and then make those referrals. So we anticipate that these screenings will, will certainly improve the number of children being referred to resources. And our goal then would be to make sure that a hundred percent of the needs of the children who have needs get the services that they're looking for and need. So it's, it's been a lot of work in that area. I think one of the exciting parts about it that people may have forgotten is Achee Brown County has a community information system. And through that system, the information from the pediatricians and whatnot will go into the community information system using their Epic system. And that'll feed in, and I'm looking at Mary to see if I'm saying it right. And then what will happen is, some of our childcare providers actually have their student information and so we have Encompass in. And then the Green Bay Public Schools has information in there as well. And it's all munged, you can't identify a particular student, but they are coded with numbers. So it will be really important to see if this early intervention and the screening tools around child development, it's the ASQ, which is... Michelle, you should know Dr. Beechler. It is the, the stages and...
Ages and stages.
Ages and stages questionnaire.
Sure.
Yeah, that's filled out as the child progresses. To really be able to see, a child who's come through this process, identified with needs, receives those supports, is, is well-prepared when we see them, when they enter school. So it's a lot of lifting that's been done, but these annual screenings we anticipate will help improve the resources and supports that a child may access. And again, it really goes back to the, all the, all the medical providers in our area agreeing to do this, to put their data in and to really work hard to even follow up with the families. I think sometimes you can make the referrals, but the families may not take advantage of it. So, a lot of work being done, a lot left to do. But then what we'll follow that student to see how they do once they come to our doors. So that's one, one of the outcomes that we're working on. The other one is really around a child succeeding in school. And it really looks at, it's the graduation task force. And schools have been working very hard on outcome two, making sure that students graduate from high school. I know Brenda, you actually were the champion for outcome two for a long time. We have teams representing Denmark, Green Bay and Howard Swamaco, who are working with community partners to match students at risk for dropping out with mentors. And so this whole particular opportunity is intended to, we're in an alpha pilot stage, a very small stage. But being able to identify students who may need some additional supports and hooking them up with mentors at various levels and providing them that caring adult to help them shepherd them through middle and high school on their trajectory to success. So again, it's a very small number right now that we're engaged in the pilot program. But from the learnings, we hope to expand and improve attendance, achievement and behavior for our kids. Our schools involved here in Green Bay are Preble and Edison as well. And I know that Vicky and her team have been working with, with the team, the graduation task force team. And we anticipate that through these mentoring programs, Big Brothers, Big Sisters are involved and Boys and Girls Club will be able to expand that as well to address the needs of more students as they make their chit... as they make their trajectory in grade six through twelve. It's just a very small test where they're identifying students and hooking them up with mentors, so...
Just a pilot.
It's just a pilot. It's just a pilot that will afford students or... And maybe Vicky, I don't know if you want to come up and speak to it.
It's not a test, it's just the word used to reference that it's a pilot.
A pilot. It's not an assessment, it's hooking up students with mentors. They're calling it a test. That's what it is. But what I'd like to do, this is just very brief. I think it would be after the first of the year, moving forward, I would like to invite Adam Hardy from Achee Brown County and his team to come and just talk overview of the whole effort. I think sometimes as people transition and move into different positions, and this is kind of morphed in different ways, it would be important to just get some updates if the board would be amenable to that. And then I put the link in there, and it's acheebrowncounty.org, I think, too. Yep, that you can look at for more information.
And the goal is to eventually have all ten school districts...
Yes, all the Brown County school districts involved.
We started just with Howard, Green Bay, and Denmark in the beginning, but all ten school districts have been involved in some way with Achee Brown County from the very beginning.
So, okay. The next item I have is focused on a success story. And I think before I do that, there's a lot of success going on, but I know that I wanted to just reference, and I know Brenda, you had a chance to attend Find Your Inspiration, which was last week. We had all of our eighth-grade students across Brown County attended Find Your Inspiration. There were more than sixty businesses and opportunities for students to engage in possible future careers. There's some great pictures that I know that were shared on our website to talk about just the different opportunities of careers. I know that our communities speak very highly of the students who participated. I had a chance to visit with some of our students as they engaged with medical professionals from Bellin, for example. And I know that other, Selcom was there, a lot of technology and business folks were there as well to partner in NWTC and different experiences for kids. Sometimes just to show them what's available to them and provide a much broader look at what we have right here in our community to engage students. So, a lot of excitement around that. And I know that they did a preview night this year for community members, or even parents, to bring their students who weren't eighth graders there as well. And then the next day was a full day, very well-run, with careers, fire, police, everyone there, two different floors. And every middle schooler from Brown County pretty much was in attendance. It was just a wonderful experience for our kiddos, so. So, that was the success story. And then, the next thing I have is school start times. I did a guiding change, but my question is, Sandy, and Brenda, you would know, there is a motion, if I'm not mistaken, a recommended motion. Does the motion need to be made before the board would say, go ahead with the guiding change? The motion is around that the board would recommend?
We can make the motion, and then second, and then have conversation.
Okay.
So, I'll move on to school start times study.
What I put together is a guiding change document, and it was shared with you. And I have copies as well for you. And what a guiding change is just really intended to do is provide framework so that the work that we go out and do aligns with what the board is intending us to do. So, I'll pass that around. Basically, it's in draft form, as though if there are any changes to this document that the board would recommend, what we will do then is make those necessary changes and then post it as part of the records as we move forward. The goal of the task force is to answer the question, what are the implications of changing school start times for all of the stakeholder groups? And then, when you look at the why we're doing this, I cited a number of research pieces and documents. The American Academy of Pediatrics wrote a policy urging middle and high schools to adjust start times, that delaying school start times for adolescents has been proposed to address insufficient sleep in an effort to improve students' academic performance, reduce engagement in risk behaviors, and improve health, and so on. So, that's really the intent of those first several bullets. And then it gets into the kinds of data that would be gathered. The research conducted and data gathered in this exploratory process that I found based on a number of readings that people say would be very helpful in identifying moving forward would be data sets around sleep-related variables and academic achievement measures of our students. Measuring possible mental health, I'm not exactly sure how that would look, but looking at behavior problems, risk behavior, safety, statistics such as motor vehicle crashes and so forth are all implications, as well as looking at transportation, travel time, athletics, academics, and so forth. Stakeholder groups would have to be identified as well. It's interesting, when the students started speaking about it the other morning at the meeting, it started to open the door from various perspectives and various stakeholder groups, whether it be a student who needs to go home after school to take care of young siblings that are at home and that impact, or looking at a student who has multiple, multiple activities during the day. So, I think there's a lot of discussion that needs to be held, from our business community to our parent groups and so forth. But certainly, the research is compelling with this. And then, what we would do is provide, at the end of the day, a full story about what we learned in the study from all aspects, so that the board can make some decisions as to the next steps.
I'm not really sure how this worked last time with the last task for the boundary task force, school boundaries. Is it possible to make more of an effort to create a task force that's a little more diverse? Because it definitely was not the last time. Especially, you know, we're talking about all key stakeholder groups. Parents that have kids that are not necessarily involved in all kinds of activities, that have other concerns or think it would be in their best interest. How does, how does, like, how do you go about looking for those people in the task force?
Well, I think there's, I think if I recall, and I'm going to have to defer to Lori, but I believe that the boundary task force was people who just wanted to sign up. Is that?
Correct. So, the facility task force was, we had done a board-appointed task force, so it was Mike Letka and I, and I just wait there. I'd agree to come up with a list for that, and so we kind of... And then we sort of listed categories, and I tried to pick people for that. And then, based on some feedback for the boundary task force, we thought we would try, and so much what some other districts have done, a application process, which was just fill out the application, and then basically much, sign up, get on, most of us. And, you know, so we did recognize that it did not bring in a lot of diversity. So, I'm thinking of probably a combination, which could probably have a good use in the future. So, that you can fill in those gaps that those you filled in sort of through self. We did have, like, the problem with the boundary task force, the focus task force, is that the people who show up on day one don't play state with you till the end. And so, like diversity, we did have on the task force, just kind of really windowed out.
Well, yeah, and I think I went to the first, the first meeting, and I noticed there might have been one or two people that weren't white. I mean, that's what it looked like to me.
And again, it was, it was self-selection.
Yeah. So, to your point, Rhonda, yes. The answer is yes, and I think it's very, very critical. Not only, there are ways to do that from focus groups to students representing broad, you know, groups that we can tap on the shoulder.
Is it possible, because for some people committing to the, with a daunting sixth week, can people sign up as teams and alternate and share with one another what was discussed in the meeting that they didn't? If, you know, we could...
Well, I think that, to me, I think that was a different process than probably...
This is going to be, yeah.
...the task force process, right? I mean, that was, you know, we asked people to commit to that because we wanted them to do, and then bring to the board, you know, their bodies, right? Because that's not, wasn't the staff work, it was their work. And so, where I think in this case, what you're looking at is really having surveys, focus groups. I mean, you're going to be looking at variety, because here you're trying to get input, right? I mean, there, they forgot to actually do that.
Create.
We provided data, and then they were, they were to take that information and create recommendations, right? Where here, you know, you may have, you may get to a point of recommendations, but I think your first base is going to be just collecting feedback.
Right, right.
And that would be live, like, on the data. Would be wanting to collect that feedback from various groups, and then bring some people together to take that feedback.
To look at it deeper.
Can I make a suggestion as well? There's a lot of new neighborhood associations that are forming right now in the city. And they're trying to attract younger parents as well. So, that might be a good idea of people to tap into.
Absolutely. I think it's a very good idea.
I do like the idea of not just surveys, but the focus groups to guarantee or more likely ensure a wider representation. Because it's not a commitment of coming for six meetings overall, but you're getting some good data based on specific questions that are being asked.
Sounds good.
Can your, in terms of timeline, have you, I know we've got a bunch of balls in the air right now, but I...
Well, I think we're in the process of shaping. We thought we would get your feedback this evening and frame, and frame how we would go about collecting this data and create the plan then from this as well. I know that there are certain, certain folks that have much more access. I mean, we did talk to a couple of people, John and I, talked with Tim Flood today, for example, about, you know, what that would look like just even through an athletic lens or activities lens, and to do some exploration around other school districts that are, that are using a different start time. So, we've got probably different people, but just even creating survey tools and so forth. You know, the goal would be to create a plan next and come back with the plan and a timeline. I think that the piece that I would offer is that if you go out and read about this, this is a study process that takes a while. It's not quite like writing a dissertation, but it could be, you know. It does, it takes a while, but you want to get as many voices so you understand everything. So, it might take them a while, so.
Oh, you do, sorry.
I guess I don't, I don't want to see a lot of, a lot of time pass. I like to see the, I like to see task force members identified within the next, within the next few months, rather than wait a long time. I think that there should be, there should be a working group that starts meeting with stakeholders. I think that's important. I think that although there is a lot of research to look at, I think whether, whether or not we're going to be able to implement what the research says, the research is overwhelmingly one-sided in favor of the later start time. Now, what that means in each community and how that works, maybe you're able to do this much, maybe you're able to do this much. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see a group identified probably, you know, sooner rather than later, even though the role at first might not be exactly the same as with the boundary committee. I'd like to see those people identified and get a chance to meet once in a while.
Yeah, when I speak about the research, I'm talking about the focus groups and the data gathering that the groups have to do. Because I agree with you, the research is overwhelming. Again, what I would like to be able to do is go back and look at where we're currently right now doing facilities and looking at facilities. We're looking at a number of things around academic achievement that are moving too. So, I would just, with all due respect, be able to just kind of frame it. I agree, we can't wait a year, that isn't the plan. But, but I don't want to make sure that I misspeak or overstep because I've got to get people on board to do it. What I really appreciate is that the students are excited about it and can help us as well. So, just kind of putting that plan together. I don't think that what you're asking for, Andrew, is impossible at all. And I, and I understand where you're coming from. But if I could create the plan and then kind of frame it out and get a bigger picture of where people are at, I'd really, really appreciate being able to do that. So that we, we want to do it comprehensively and thoughtfully. And so, we just have the map at first. But I, I'm sure there are people who, you know, within the next couple of months, we could get something moving, absolutely.
So, ideally, before summer, because everyone just, you know, not around, not really thinking in the context of really, you know, buckling down and doing a lot of anything other than just enjoying summer?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're doing right now, we're wrapping up the open enrollment surveys going out, so we'll have that data coming in. We just want to make sure that we have enough people able to do this well. And, but yeah, I think we can start this process, absolutely.
And it seemed like a nice thing, you know, and during the winter, gave people something else to do, you know, they're not really out, they're not doing a lot of traveling, they're not really focused on much else. They're hunkered down a little bit more, so we could do it in the winter, possibly?
And I, I think we can work on it. And again, I'd like to map it if I could. And I would like to know, I mean, if a board member interests in helping, and that would be helpful too. I've got John and Vicky looking at me like, hmm.
You know, we're excited about the work, we want to support it. We also want to make sure that the things that we've committed to with math and literacy and instructional leadership and some of the other changes in place, you know, we heard today about Nivinci and turbocharge and things of that nature. We want to sure, make sure that we're not overcommitting and under-delivering. We want to make sure that we do it, we do it well. I think there's opportunity to parallel. But we also have to make sure that if we are taking this on as a major project, project, that we think of what we shift or change in relation to that and make sure that this is a very important strategic lever for us to pull. But is it the time for the strategic lever at this point?
Cheryl Rennerwig, can you write her name, by the Neighborhood Association? Cheryl Rennerwig at the city?
Yes, I know Cheryl, yeah.
She'd be able to find, and Will Peters.
So, what I'll do is, we'll go back, we'll work on a plan, and get that out and map it out. And I know, again, there are certain people that have maybe a little more flexibility in their schedules, and that's what we were thinking about today. But I do think that there are some nice places. And I, the Neighborhood Association's a great idea as well.
Are there, still, what do you need from us today, other than, I mean, I think we need to identify probably two board members that would be...
That would be interested.
Interested, that are willing to be part of this process. Probably mostly part of a, part of the task force, the community task force part of things. But are there, so I guess I'd assume you'd be interested in being on the task force. Is there anybody else that wants to be part of that, or let me know? I mean, maybe it'll change, you know, once we know what it is. Because right now, we're signing up for something that's not necessarily defined in terms of commitment, time commitment. So, we can, so you'll come to us kind of with what you think makes sense in terms of... in terms of mapping out?
I think, yeah, I think there.
Cause it's, you know, if you do it as focus groups instead of, you know, everybody coming on, so you might be able to do it in a way that's efficient for a lot of, a lot of different people, yeah.
I think that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Not only our own staff, but community members too, yeah.
And then, and then get a core group that would come back together and look at all the, the findings, and that's what I'm thinking that, you know, would take several.
Do you think this process was more into facilitator like the boundary task force did, or do you think we can do it on our own?
I think that's what we have to talk about. Um, I do think that there's great merit in, um, being able to do it well and right, as John said, but I, you know, I think if we could even like framing the questions, making sure that we're asking questions that will garner the information we're seeking, making sure that we have carefully vetted through, and that's why we need to call some school districts that have already done this, to get their lessons learned. And so from there, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to miss any groups, because I think that that's really important, and then it's looking at the nexus between where the natural fits, because they're out there, there are groups that meet all over the place, and we could just maybe tap in like we did with the referendum and visited, um, a whole host of, I mean, neighborhood associ-, we were everywhere, so there are some natural groups, so it's just really.
And you, so I forget the process that we use when we utilize CISA seven to do those community forums.
That's, that's a great idea too.
It's another way to.
Right.
Get a lot of.
Well, then you can, you can launch it much quicker, if you have a little help with that framing too, that's a great idea too as well.
So is, is the board, as, um, Dr. Landfeld and her team look at laying this out, is the board amenable to, um, things like hiring CISA seven or, or a facilitator, if it looks like that's the, going to be the best way to get it done, as opposed to expecting, I mean, I don't know how this'll look, but you know, the potential is, is that we expect people that are already knee-deep in two or three different other, um, initiatives and, and we ask them to do this and then they'll slow down, so I guess it's.
You know, in order to move on with, with any reasonable degree of, of speed, I think it's critical that we do that, I'd like to, I'd like to have, you know, your staff explore with CISA seven and see it up there, you know, and then we'll do that process again.
Yeah.
Um, if there's other things as far as, um, doing focus groups, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
But if we approve this, then you can start talking to the people at Appleton and get things started.
And then we can launch it in different ways, as long as the board is amenable. I do think it, to your point, that it, it would expedite if we had, at least helped frame it, you know?
CISA seven did a nice job.
They did.
I think you did a very good.
And when you have those people come in and they give you their feedback or their concerns or their approval for it, then you have something to go on as far as what to do is, you know, for more research, we have to look into this concern, we have to look into that.
Right.
This seems to be a positive, this seems, so then we have a little more of a basis of what to do.
To, to look deeper at, that's a great idea.
I would be amenable to, I don't know if, um, I mean, CISA seven did a great job with what we asked them to do, but, um, I'd almost like to see us have a point person that's, um, like we had with the boundary task force with Pete Ross, who came in and, and that was his, that what he focused on, that he did the, he had time to do legwork in between meetings, he, um, you know, did a lot of planning and thinking and, I mean, cause this is a huge project that's gonna take somebody a lot of energy and time, you know, whoever's in charge of, of shepherding the whole process.
We can do that.
Is gonna, is gonna need to have that time, and I, you know, I don't know if Appleton potentially used somebody and maybe we can.
Who Appleton used or what their process.
Anyway, I think there's opportunity for.
We'll follow up with that as well.
Doing this, I don't want this to upend the other things that we've started and are moving and, um.
Well, I, I think it's within the superintendent's discretion, the authority, if you want to.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure the board was okay with that, so she can.
They're giving thumbs up over the table over there.
Yeah.
But, but I, but I like where you're going with that, to understand that we're gonna have probably that task force coalesce at different points in time to look at what the findings are to date, bring it back, look here, come back, so.
And that'll be kind of like the same rhythm of the boundary task force, they, they went out, they didn't work, they came back, they, they.
Better in the winter.
And that's been worked well, except Pete had to drive all the way from Mammoth Island.
Kind of far.
Wasn't good for him and that's.
No, no.
Um, I don't, I guess I'm not, I'm not opposed to, uh, an outside facilitator, if, if that is something that helps, really helps get things going, I think it was maybe, to me, it was more, uh, more important where there's, I'm not saying that there wouldn't be some, somewhat of an emotional component to something about school start time, but if you look at that, if you look at a difference in school start time, you know, as far as emotional impacts stacked up against boundary changes that change what school you go to or against, um, something as, uh, charged of an, um, argument as armed guards, those, you know, th- those are a different scale, I think, I think you probably have to have all your, you know, I don't, so I don't know that automatically has to happen, if it, if it gets things moving faster, I'm, I'm okay with it. The other, the other thing, I guess I would, I, I don't want to, I, I would hate to see us just set up for, you know, an expectation of just such a huge wall of complexity that this is, this is a complicated issue with moving parts, yes, but there's not, there's not as many as there are to, for example, if there were to be boundary changes where every, every street, every, every school is a potential piece, you know, we're not going to have all schools with different start times, we probably would have chunks of schools moving start times if we did it, it's not as, it's not the same complexity as school security where, you know, guards, not guards spend the money on this security or that security, there's many more options on the table where this ultimately will come down to a decision within a more defined set of circumstances. So it's, it's important, it's complicated, but I don't think it's as complicated as some of these other things.
If you, you know, go back to our Intercity Student Council discussion, there was quite a diversity of opinion in that brief ten minutes that we talked about it, so I think CISA seven did a nice job of holding in, um, a lot of people's opinions and pulling out themes and presenting to us, I think it's, so.
So.
Cause we didn't, all we got was that, you know, we got the high school student perspective on this, and there's a bunch of different groups in all of this that are gonna have different perspectives, I mean, the elementary parents, if they're gonna be asked to take, you know, have their kids starting school at seven thirty and eight in the morning instead of what they do now, um, that's gonna add to a, you know, quite a bit of complexity to early childcare, now it's after-school childcare needed and, you know, all of those kinds of things, um.
Right, but I mean, I'm saying there's not, you know, it's not like there's gonna be a, you know, we had to talk, in school security, we were talking not just about whether or not, although it was often framed that way, it was not just about whether or not to have armed guards, but also if you're not, what are we spending money on, are we gonna do the, this entrance or that, we're really here, you know, it's not like we're gonna be talking about, okay, you know, we're not, I'm sure.
Either or.
Starting at six is not one of the choices, starting at noon is not one of the choices, um, et cetera, so it's, but, I mean, it's a big choice, but I don't think there's, it's not like there's thirty options to pick from.
And I would imagine that there's a blueprint out there, Appleton might be using it, that's what they're doing.
And that's if we pass this, you can check with Appleton or what.
Yep, that's what I would do, that would be a first call.
All right, so, um, we have a motion on the table, Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Eckert?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitikah?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dart?
Aye.
Carrie, six, zero.
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, section one eighteen point zero seven point four point CP, the written drill evaluation submitted by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second.
Any comments?
Yeah, I can make a comment on it, uh, I just wanna, uh, give a, a compliment and a shout-out to, uh, to Chris Coller for the work he did on that. Um, I know that across the state, um, people are clamoring for just how to report this, this requirement that came as a result of Act one forty-three, and, uh, he was, uh, creative, innovative and, and short initiative and putting together a, a good format, um, and, uh, again, just my compliments for that.
And I would second that.
Really gave, we read through all of the, the, the last two columns, you know, the, what they learned and things like that, it really gives credence to why we have these drills, um, this thing, you know, just, there were some schools where things just physically were different because of outside construction in the city or, you know, things that are happening and, and things like that, so anyway, it was just interesting to read all of that.
Uh, this is a positive requirement, I, I, I believe, I mean, the, the requirement for doing, uh, school safety drills or school violence drills, however you wanna term it, is not new, it didn't happen with Act one forty-three, but I know, again, from the work I'm doing around the state, that there are a lot of places that just have ignored it. And now there's a requirement that it be brought before school boards and that school boards recognize it and accept the reports, so.
That's good.
Folks are doing a real good job on it.
All right, Sandy?
Eckert?
Aye.
Sitikah?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dart?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye. Carrie, six, zero.
Okay, cool. Thank you. We have no legal department update, next is our Intercity Student Council report, turn that over to Jamie.
So, um, today I have Hannah Van Pei with me, um, and we had our first ICSC quarterly of the year, um, just last week with the board where we discussed, um, uh, schedules for the final exams this year, um, we discussed, uh, decoration of caps for graduation, and we ended up discussing school start times. Um, homecoming and football has pretty much wrapped at all of the high schools, um, I know at all of the high schools, we are working on college application and FAFSA, and we have our student services, uh, giving, or hosting, uh, get it done days for FAFSA and college applications to help with the process. Um, volleyball season is starting, basketball seasons are starting, um, our GBU, which is Green Bay United Swim Team, beat Shaboygan South at their last meet, um, the PSAT was October tenth, um, and then in the theater department, um, East is working on their musical Billy Elliot, Preble is working on their musical Newsies, and West is working on their play, which is a take on Robin Hood and their competition piece for one act. And this weekend, Operation Snowball is happening at Aldo Leopold, which is a leadership retreat that touches on drug and alcohol use, um, and that includes students throughout the district.
And the middle school section.
And that is all for the ICSC report.
Thank you, Jamie. Next we have our legislative liaison report, we'll turn that over to Laura.
Um, we have two items, the first one, um, I'll cover it, and the second one, Michelle's gonna give us an update on the Blue Ribbon Commission. Um, so the, um, there is going to be a record number of referendum on, a ballot, um, on November sixth, and the upcoming election includes eighty-two referenda questions in sixty-one school districts across the state. So far this year, at elections held in February, April, and August, local voters have approved sixty-three of the seventy-four questions, which is eighty-five percent across fifty-five districts. We've been talking about the complexities and deficiencies of how public schools are funded in the state for a really long time, um, and I expect that until there's large political shift in Madison, that trend will continue. Um, everyone seems to agree that change is desperately needed, but where the politicians will not act, local taxpayers are asked to step up, and they seem to be doing so in large numbers. Um, so I read this, um, update and it got me thinking about our recently passed referendum here in Green Bay, and how grateful I am to the taxpayers, voters, and parents for the passage of those referenda. The benefits are being felt in every school and every corner of our district and have allowed a huge push forward for the work we are all committed to. I believe we will see those benefits for generations to come, and I just felt that it was a good time to revisit this investment and remind everyone of how much we appreciate the citizens of this district who voted yes to support public education in our community. And that's, that's it.
And it's your turn?
That was an interrupt, I might.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I don't think we can talk about that too often.
As I come in and take and serve gratitude, as we, as we unfolded the budget tonight, I, I kept thinking of the twenty-one million dollars that we had cut prior to, um, the referendum and how our goal was to hang on to the programming that we had and make sure that we could keep moving forward, and I think about the, Diane's gonna come up and talk about step two tonight of the, the technology purchase, for example, um, that we were able to provide new technology to our teachers in classrooms and, and provide that training for them as well, and professional development around math in these important areas. The Blue Ribbon Commission, um, obviously the, we met and, and provided, Representative Kitchens and Senator Olson our best thinking, but what was very apparent during the testimony was that we are not delivering equitable experiences and learning opportunities for all students across the state of Wisconsin, and that continues, and I know when John referenced it earlier, is that it isn't on the equalized aid when it doesn't come on the revenue limit and it just, everybody gets the same, you, you start to see disparities, some significant disparities around, um, how schools are funded across the state, um, and so forth, so as you start to look out into the future, I think one of the important, um, areas that kept coming up, um, areas around early childhood, a very significant area of great discussion for us, um, to keep talking about, and I know that, um, I believe it's in Dr. Evers' proposal, um, some, some support around early childhood, but then also looking at, um, equalization aid around the revenue limit and also continued, um, additional categoricals, I think that, that, again, I can't say it enough, and they're costing these out, the special education that John just shared with us, and that we've got more than three, thirty-three million out of the general revenues now, um, to support, um, that area and not the reimbursement levels that we would need to continue. Um, the whole piece around English language, um, you know, eight percent reimbursement and we're serving more than forty-five hundred students whose first language is not English, and the nearest neighbor has a hundred and forty-seven English language learners, so you start to see those disparities and things like that, so the categoricals, um, they're pricing out, um, increased, um, percentage of reimbursement, uh, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau's pricing out, and then also looking at what that would look like for a revenue limit to be equitable across the state. Um, and again, right now, there's been a slow uptick, it's a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars, it's at ten-five, if I'm not mistaken, ten thousand five hundred, and we're at nine, and we're at ninety-five hundred, so that's just the state average.
Yeah, and we're just.
That's just the state average, but there are school districts that are well above fifteen, sixteen thousand. Now granted, it isn't all just money coming from the state, they'll say it's coming from their tax base, but again, then that's a zip code issue and that's the inequity, so I'm looking forward to where the Legislative Fiscal Bureau goes, I think it's very important to recognize that when we look out into the future for the state of Wisconsin, if we continue down this road inequitably funding schools and, and different districts, we're going to find in ourselves in an outcome we don't want to see. I know that the rurals have really banded together around issues around transportation and so forth, and I know that, uh, Dr. Evers has put out a whole proposal for urban schools with the recognition that there are additional resources that need to be provided if we are going to make sure that we close that achievement gap and support the staff and the students within the schools, so, all right, more to come.
I have a question.
Sure.
So there are legislators on that commission who could potentially not be there after an election, are they up for election?
I, I would assume some of them would be.
Right.
I would assume some of them are.
So has there been discussion? I mean, how does that work then? Do they just?
That's a really good question.
I'm just wondering what the makeup of that commission will look like in four weeks.
Well, I don't think Luther is up. I don't know.
He's a senator, right?
Right.
So, and I don't, yeah.
But they're.
I don't know that they can't, you know, they can't possibly.
Stop it.
Well, the assembly goes every two years. If they stop working just because, you know what I mean? I mean, I think they just wait and see what happens, is my guess. And then the, who called? It was, it was Voss.
It was Voss.
And the governor, um,
It was Voss.
That asked for the, the commission, but then Voss is the one that put it together. So he probably would be asked then to replace if, if somebody comes.
No, not Voss. Um, it, I'm trying to think who else is, who is, who is all on there from the state?
The legislature?
Yes.
Catherine, Kathleen Beinhout is on there and Joel Kitchens, Quinn.
Har, no, Harstor.
No, no, she wasn't there anymore. Um, Alberta Darling.
Oh, that's what I was thinking of.
Who's seated around these?
Are these all people that are up for reelection possibly?
I don't think they all are.
Okay.
Well, Sarah Beinhout is leaving office.
Beinhout is, yeah. I think that the piece, I would say this, that, um, the commitment is there.
Oh, Sandeep Pope.
Sandeep Pope. Yep, the commitment is there and it's been very public. I would assume that it has to be, a report has to come out. I mean, I think.
With all the time and resources, yeah.
People are waiting for it. I think that there is, um, obviously the number of people who came out for these hearings. I mean, they were well attended across the entire state. So there are a number of people who are waiting to hear what the results will be and what the, what the proposals will be forward. But there is a commitment from, I know Senator Olson, I, I would assume Representative Kitchens will be there, but I don't know that.
And when, when is the report supposed to come out?
They, well, what'll happen is right now the Legislative Fiscal Bureau's taken these recommendations and they're pricing them out. What is it really, what is going to cost the state? What does that look like? What are the dollars behind what's being proposed? And then, um, of course, the election will take place. And then they'll convene the group back together and then the recommendations will come out.
So soon.
Soon.
Okay.
Soon. And we hope to make progress.
Who's doing the pricing? Is that done in a nonpartisan way?
Yes.
Yeah, the fiscal bureau.
The Legislative Fiscal Bureau, yes. So, and they've done some, they've done work throughout this process so that we could see what it looked like. I mean, even just looking at, um, the number of states, or states, the number of school districts and where their general revenues, just the cross categorical with the special ed or the cross subsidizing of special ed from the general on twenty-seven, ten, what that even looks like and the amount of money. They run those, that set of data for us as well. They ran a lot of data, whatever people requested.
And that just ties back into what I said, is that while they're grinding away, trying to figure this out, the taxpayers are stepping up in these referendums.
That's exactly what's happened and there's quite a few coming up here as well. And I, there are school districts right now that would tell you without these referendum, they're not going to be.
They're not going to be around.
In good shape around for their kids. And, you know, so it's a, it's a, it's a very, very important time for us as a state. And the decisions that are being made coming up on November are big, in terms of the outcome for kids, I think, in, in the future of this state.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's all right.
So make sure you never.
No, no, I'm done.
Okay, uh, next thing, we have board member school visits update. Anybody has anything to share with that?
Sure, I'll share a couple. Um, I was invited to, uh, visit Lombardi about a week and a half ago. And, um, once again, you know, the initiatives that they're making towards, uh, STEM, STEAM, uh, are, are pretty impressive. They've got a metal shop in there that would rival high schools. I mean, it's phenomenal. They have a lot of other things as well. But, um, enjoyed that. Uh, visited Washington, uh, had some good conversations with some staff there. This morning I was at the Head Start building out on, uh, on, uh, help me.
I'm chill.
Bellevue. Yeah, yeah.
Bellevue.
And if you haven't gone there, I mean, you really gotta get out there. It, it's just a phenomenal place. And then I, I finished the day at Howe. I, I wanted to see the Head Start room over there again. I mean, that's at the Resource Center. So, a lot of fun.
The Lombardi space, as that was part of the upgrades, it's really nice.
I'll just share that I, um, recently was at Howe for, uh, nacho night, which was a blast. Got to meet families and staff and it was very, very popular. Gosh, there was a lot of people there. And then this morning I, I was at, uh, Lincoln, which is a school that I hadn't, hadn't been to yet. So I got a tour, met the principal. She was wonderful. Got to attend, uh, um, an event with, uh, Eric Genrick and Dave Hanson. They were there to talk to the kids about their upcoming visit to Madison at the Capitol this Friday. And watched a beautiful film about how beautiful our state Capitol is. Um, the kids had, um, really good questions. I was pretty impressed and, um, just all in all, a terrific, terrific visit.
I know Katie and Christina and I, um, went to Nicolay. Michelle was there too. They had their Hispanic, um, celebration. They were celebrating the arts and the Hispanic culture and, um, learned a lot about various countries and their, um, artists and dances and things like that. And then capped it off with Nicolay's own ballet folklorico group, um, that performed for us. So it was, it was really fun.
They did a marvelous job.
Yeah. I also spent some time in Washington last week. Um, got to see some of their new spaces and had a good conversation with Cindy and, um, and, uh, met some of the new teachers that are there and band teacher. Spent a long time talking to him, so that was fun.
When I was at Nicolay, I ran into, uh, Lori McArthur, who is, uh, one of the students. And she showed me the, uh, the rooms and, uh, she worked with the students and it was impressive, impressive setup. I also hadn't mentioned earlier that I went to the East City Stadium Automotive, uh, board meeting. And they were, the businesses, business people were very interested in setting up a, a small job fair.
Oh, very cool.
Yeah.
And I, I went to the, um, actually I've been going to BayLink Advisory Council for a couple of years now, but I went to the Bridges meeting because Christina could, is going to be doing it now from here on, but I went to the first one because she couldn't go. And it was really interesting. Lori Pecat referenced this in her presentation, but, but the, um, the group has started to form that Northeast Wisconsin Construction Alliance.
Yes.
And they talked about the difficulty of doing that because it's, um, it's people literally that have been competitors are now working.
Working together.
Together. Um, but they've seen the success of the Northeast Wisconsin, um, Manufacturers Alliance, um, which is exactly, you know, the same type of competition coming together to, to improve things for everybody. And so they're, uh, just in the early stages of that. They've got officers and, uh, recruiting businesses to be part of that. So it was interesting to hear that conversation.
Um, I had to write it down. So I, I had gone to Southwest. Um, I also went to Frabel Early Learning Center, um, which was, I'd never had ever been out there before. So that was really, um, great to see all of that. Attended the Preble High School bands getting together and performing. That was really fun. I love high school bands. And I'm going to King Thursday. And I was invited this morning to, um, come in and, um, tour chapel. So, busy.
And then Chris will try to recruit you to be a mentor. So be prepared.
Yeah.
All right, um, thanks for all that. And then, uh, district events. Um, is there anything anyone would like to announce?
Stock the box.
I know they always have that when I go to this annual conference. I'm going to miss it.
It's next week. It's not this weekend. It's next weekend. And it's Battle of the Bands. It's very cool.
I've heard it's really fun.
It's, yeah, our bands get out there. They play things, they play together. They play separately. And it's really fun because they watch each other play. And the amount of food these kids collect is extraordinary. It's just overwhelming, just overwhelming how much. And we tried to, when we judge it, it's like, we try to do it very proportionally based on student body. But there's like huge, you know, crates of it. And I know that one school had gone out, uh, two years ago, or I think it was Preble that went out for Halloween. And instead of collecting candy, they, they went around neighborhoods, band kids played through the neighborhoods and then they got canned goods and things for Stock the Box. But then each, the winning team gets what? Jamie knows that's two thousand? Two thousand dollars from Associated Bank and the Packers. And then the other schools get like fifteen hundred.
This weekend?
No, no, next weekend.
Next weekend.
Hopefully, last year it was about a hundred degrees out there. Uh, it was a little toasty. This year probably not as much, wear your snow suits. Anyway, it's a big event.
And then the, um, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And it's for the food shelf or the hunger.
Stock the box.
Hunger of America.
Feed America.
Feed America.
Just in several of the local pantries.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Andrew?
So we have Operation Snowball this weekend at Aldo Leopold School. That's a leadership retreat for high school age students plus, um, Operation Snowflake, which will be a group of, uh, middle schoolers who will be there just, uh, one night with, uh, some things the same and a separate, uh, programming track. Uh, we're actually the first Operation Snowball chapter, um, in the country that's done the, the combined track model. Uh, most places that, over the years, most places tend to either just do a middle school program and just, that's what they do, or a high school program and that's what they do. But I'm really hoping that this will give an opportunity to have some, um, come out of this with some opportunities for high school kids to look at some mentorship opportunities for middle school students and middle school students. I'm hoping that, um, we'll be able to find a, a spot for our middle school kids coming out of Operation Snowflake to be plugged into working with some type of mentoring with, uh, elementary kids, is the plan after this.
And then I know that Lori again mentioned the BayLink open house, but the people at the meeting wanted me to, um, invite more members to that. But I don't have the, Lori, do you know? Can you send us? Just send us the invite, yeah, that'd be great. I think if I did in my calendar long enough, I'd find it, but.
Thanks Lori for sending it.
Thanks.
I've seen you do.
All right, um, next we have our system reports. First, uh.
Can we do a, a break?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Are we almost done? Or no? No, we got a bit, don't we? Sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Well, yeah, but that'll, that'll take a while. It's gonna take a long one.
All right, we'll take a break. So we'll come back at, um, seven forty at that, um, on that clock back there.
Brewers were one, zero. Mike was supposed to be keeping me up first and now we're associated by end door.
Okay, several things to bring forward. Uh, we've already discussed the first one, a recommended motion that the carryover funds for Head Start and the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred twenty dollar, four hundred twenty dollars and sixty-six cents be approved.
Second.
No, she won't come if you don't need her, she said.
She was on her way.
Okay.
She's ready if you want her. It was, we got, no problem.
Sandy?
Warren? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie six zero.
Move that the International Baccalaureate Mathematics, English, and Business Management Course essential documents as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Aye.
Warren? Aye. Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnacaw?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carrie six zero.
Move that the course conversion advanced biology to advanced placement biology as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnacaw?
Aye.
Carrie six zero.
Some policy approvals. First, uh, move that the participation of non-public school students in district courses slash programs slash activities policy four twenty-three and participation of non-public school students in district courses, programs, activities, rule four twenty-three are as presented be approved.
Second.
I have one question.
Andrew?
Does this policy, um, I'm thinking of not exclusively, but mostly about middle school where we have a no, um, a no-cut activities policy. Would this, um, would this mean that if we were, no matter how full we were, we would have to accommodate a non-district person into, um, the middle school, a middle school activity? And then if there's no cuts, we might have to go to more teams or whatever? Theoretically, even though that might not be very likely?
Are you referring to?
Um, participation of non-public school students in district courses, programs, activities.
So the rules that would apply to the programs and activities for non-public school students would be the same as the rules that would apply to our students in the district? And if we have a no-cut policy, then they would be, um, required to have a space on the team as well?
Okay, and our no-cut, oh, okay. So, given that this is a unfunded mandate, I'm going to vote no on it. As a statement about unfunded mandates, I'm, it doesn't reflect any lack of faith in the work of the committee or that this matches in policy and policy.
Can you elaborate a little bit why?
Well, yeah, if we have a, if we, if we have to take, I, I'm, I'm certainly open to having opportunities. And I, I in fact supported before we even had to do this. I supported having, uh, offering space, available spots in, in act, in district activities to, um, to the outside. There's places where there's, where there's no cuts. I'm concerned specifically though about, you know, do we, because, because someone is going to a voucher school wants to come in and play middle school basketball, we have to create an extra, create an extra team?
Is that, but is that actually what?
I don't think it's likely, but it, if we have a no-cut policy for, I'm not, I mean, I think perhaps there's been confusion about the no-cut policy before. But if there's a no-cut policy and, right, am I missing something?
For students who are in private schools, the, the, the ability to, um, participate in programs and acti, I'm sorry, programs and activities is for students who are in the homeschool program. Uh, private school children, this doesn't apply to private school children.
So it doesn't apply to voucher kids either?
No, because they would be attending a private school.
It's just term school kids.
Correct.
So what, so it, does this define what, um, does it define what activities? Could we, didn't we merge all the categories of non-public together?
On the definition, there's three different.
Right, so we have home-based, private educational students and then non-public school students. And that include, and then we have private school students and tribal school students. So a home-based, private educational program student who resides in the district may participate in interscholastic activities and extracurricular activities in the district on the same basis and to the same extent that students enrolled in the district are allowed to participate. So it's just home-based. Andrew, it's not students in private schools. Non-public school students, so students in private schools can take up to two classes, up to two classes in the district, but they're not entitled to participate in the programs and activities. And then it says a non-public school student who resides in the district may participate in other educational programs and services when specifically required by the law. So that would be summer school students.
That would be what?
I'm sorry, summer school programs.
Okay, I, by mistake, I see where we merged some things into non-public school students, but then we still refer to them separately a little bit now.
Right.
And don't, don't get me wrong, I'm a, I'm a director in a program that has welcomed, uh, there's been a GBA PS-based program that has welcomed with open arms people from other districts into Snowball. But the thing with Snowball is it can't, uh, it can't really get too big. I was just worried about squeezing out participation, but, um, I see now where that's, I just, just read that, so I'll go ahead and vote yes, and I will pick a different fight some other time for unfunded mandates.
All right, Sandy?
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Move that the part-time public school open enrollment policy four twenty-five and procedures rule four twenty-five are as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And we have some repeals.
We missed one.
Yeah, I feel like we missed one.
Oh, did I miss one?
Four twenty-four.
Number two.
Two.
Oh.
Yeah, one and a half to three.
Okay. Four twenty-four I missed? Okay.
Yeah, number, under number two.
Move that the full-time public school open enrollment policy four twenty-four and full-time public school open enrollment procedures rule four twenty-four are as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Uh, move that the guidelines for the selection and adoption of textbooks rule three sixty-one are be repealed.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf? Carried six zero.
Move that the guidelines for the selection review of library media source, resources, three sixty-one rules three be repealed.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Move that the procedures for the selection and use of supplementary instructional materials rule three sixty-one sub four be repealed.
Aye, I mean, second. So, tip my hand.
And we're just getting started, Katie, okay?
Trying to expedite things.
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye. Dorf? Carried six zero.
That concludes teaching and learning.
All right, thank you Ed. Next is organizational support that will be facilitated by Andy Becker.
All right.
First, under discussion, public comment and action items. I move that Riverside Technologies Inc. be awarded the bid for Miracast Display Adapter Units at a starting quantity of six hundred at a total cost of ninety-nine thousand dollars as presented.
Second.
We didn't talk about this last time, does it?
Yeah, Diane is here.
Diane, yeah.
Yeah, and this is, this is a, come up. There's an expansion of a, a tool that staff is already using, but they're clamoring for more. So she can explain it. It's a, it's a really neat thing, neat technology that teachers and staff would like.
Get all my gear up here for you. Okay, um, first of all, I want to share with you that, uh, this is the device that we were able to get our classroom teachers. And so over the summer, we deployed, um, this device. It's a Yoga, uh, Lenovo Yoga Yoga L three eighty. And so our teachers and our, our staff members have been working with these. That was phase one of our wireless workstation move. At this point, we've got desktops sitting on our, uh, teachers' desks yet, but, uh, we heard loud and clear from them that when we upgraded, they wanted to be mobile. And so this is a device that they had, um, really said fit, fit their needs. So phase two now of this process is going to be to take the desktop away, okay? To move, remove the desktop. Some of them are eight and nine years old, so, uh, they're, they're quite slow. And we will replace that with a docking station. We'll keep the monitor there, we'll keep the keyboard, we'll keep the mouse. It all plugs into the docking station. It has one cable that goes then to this laptop, okay? So that, um, this laptop would replace that, what that desktop does. Okay, now the, the next part to that is installing one of these, which is, it uses a Miracast technology, and it allows this laptop, um, to cast whatever's on the screen to the display wirelessly. Now that's the beauty of things, because in the past, you had to be hooked up to a projector somehow or your flat panel or whatever. But now, uh, with this in place, a, a teacher could be anywhere with this laptop within the classroom and be able to cast wirelessly to their projector. And the cool part is that this is an enterprise technology, so kids cannot butt in and take the screen over as well. And so, uh, like that would never happen, right, here in Green Bay? But I, I know as a former, uh, computer applications teacher, that, you know, there are some things that you just have to watch. And so, uh, we tested this out. Uh, we had ordered two hundred forty of them, uh, with the initial purchase, but we really wanted to make sure that they worked in the classroom, and they do. And so, uh, we want to round out, uh, the, the rest of our classrooms by installing these, uh, when we install the dock. So therefore, that's why you have the purchase request in front of you. Uh, we asked for, um, a sliding scale with the initial purchase of six hundred, uh, so that, uh, you know, if they're not as wildly popular as we think that they will be, so we're not overpurchasing. But as a classroom teacher, uh, we really did hear from many that being able to be mobile within the classroom was really important to them, and to be able to cast and show what's on their screen onto, um, their, their display was really important to them. So this is a vital tool, and I have to tell you that, uh, we're not seeing a lot of school districts, um, moving to something like this yet, but as we tell the story about how this works, uh, we're hearing a lot of our colleagues saying, hmm, that's a pretty good idea.
So I thought we were, I thought we were giving the docks, uh, the docking stations out right away with, when we did these computers.
Yes, we, we thought that that would work, but we were running into a couple issues. For instance, our substitute teachers, our guest teachers, um, if we made that sudden change, uh, we wouldn't have time to get them acclimated, uh, to the new environment. And so what we're going to do is phase this in by school, meaning that we will, um, you know, choose one school at a time, and we will make these installs, and then also let, um, HR know who the schools are who have transitioned to this, because we will not have a desktop, uh, any longer available to a guest teacher. So we had to reconsider that.
Yeah, but I thought we talked about that when we were first doing this. I mean, does that mean that a classroom teacher doesn't have, doesn't have easy access to, to their keyboard and mouse then unless they start plugging, unplugging, plugging things in themselves?
You mean at this point, they can use, they can use the desktop? Right now, they've got two machines. They've got the desktop in their, in their classroom as well as this.
So you're telling me they can put a, yes, they can turn on their eight-year-old desktop and stare at that piece of equipment, I suppose, but that is not what I thought. You know, I went out, you know, I was telling teachers that they were going to have a great piece of equipment, and if, and for the biggest concern which I heard, which was, you know, full-size, full-size keyboard, you know, full-size mouse, when I'm not mobile, uh, I was, I was out there telling teachers that based on the discussion about the docking station, that there was going to be a docking station. So, I don't want to, I, I, I really hope if there's teachers who are in a situation right now that are looking, looking at this while using their eight-year-old laptop, I, I hope we get that rectified pretty soon without having to wait for people's, schools' numbers to, to come out. And I'm, I'm sure there's, there's at least a couple of USB ports on, on it?
Yes.
So, yes, if they know what they're looking for, yes, they can, it's not terribly difficult to, to do, but, um, yeah, that was, I was not, I, I guess I'm, I'm glad we're adding these pieces. I'm voting yes on adding the, the Miracast, it's good. I just, I really thought that, um, you know, understanding that guest teachers was an issue, I thought, I thought that was worked out, so, all right. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Diane. Sandy?
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye. Carried six zero.
All right. I move that the independent actuarial review be postponed until the November twenty eighteen board meeting. So that's, I mean, the motion that the independent actuarial review be postponed until the November twenty eighteen board meeting.
So that's, does that mean you want the review done by November?
Completed?
I don't think that, that language says it has to be that. I, I, I'm concerned, my concern is that revisited implies that we might not do it, and I don't want to reverse the intent, there, the board voted for an independent actuarial review, and I don't want to in some way, in any way suggest that there wouldn't, that there might not be one. Uh, I have said that as the person most interested, and, yeah, so.
But it, the way it's worded makes it sound like you expect it to be done in November. As, I mean, I guess is that what you're asking for, that it be postponed until?
If I say it?
I, I'm ensuring that it should be done November twenty eighteen.
Yeah. Can you, can you reword it? I mean, I get why you don't like what's written there, but.
I mean, it's close, I mean, it's, it's close, I don't. Okay, so I'll, I'll withdraw my motion. And then. I guess as, as long as, as long as the understanding is clear, I mean, there still is a, we still, we did pass a motion to, to do it, right? So that still stands? All right, I'll make a motion that the independent actuarial review be postponed and revisited at the November twenty eighteen board meeting.
Second.
Sandy?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the substitute teacher job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Katie?
Are we making the switch to guest teacher or not? And if we are, should this be the guest teacher job description?
We would like to refer to the teachers as guest teachers when they're in the building, but for purposes of recruitment, um, the concern is that people won't know what the guest teacher is because the word substitute teacher is so prevalent.
And that's a licensed term too, substitute teacher.
The license, okay. And that's the group. Yeah, I just wanted to check. Is it worked out, the guest?
I have a question about the qualification required. Is it all of those, or can it be any of them?
It's all of those. They all have to come together, the associate's degree as the minimum, um, and then the, the license, the class that the person has to take, um, and then they have to have that, um, license. And so all of our teachers, our substitute teachers do have that, and, and that's what we want them to have. And that's right from the DPI website.
Yeah, the training and certification kind of come pretty, pretty quick for, for us.
Uh, the training is usually a one-day or an online program. Um, and so, uh, when they have that, they get their certificate right there, uh, after the program. And then when they upload that, as well as their degree transcript, and they will be able to get their DPI license.
Rodney?
Um, aside from, you know, a slight increase in pay, are we doing anything different to vet substitute teachers at all?
To secure them?
To attract them, to secure them, to vet them, to, because we had an issue obviously last year with having a member.
We, we are, we have a brochure that Lori Blaisley helped do, and, um, we are giving those out, and we have had, uh, the invitations to apply on the, um, our, our website, Facebook. I think you have something on Facebook. And so we're, we're, um, interviewing and hiring, I think, every, at least three to five every week.
And that's different than last year? The last school year?
No, I think it's about the same. I think, I think we're just hiring them as we can.
Okay.
Does this job description make it easier or harder for someone to qualify to be a substitute?
Easier.
Easier.
It opens up the door, um, to allow somebody with an associate degree to become a substitute teacher, which is the change that was made, um, August first of this year through the DPI. And that's because the, your state is having a shortage of substitutes. And for us, it'll enable us if we have a noon hour supervisor or para who has an associate's degree to get the permit, the substitute permit or license. And then actually, if they have any time, they, you know, if they're part-time here, they could, um, spend additional time if they wish, subbing in the classroom. Or, and will give the principals more flexibility to, in, in case they want to have the person subteach and they have the qualifications. So it mean, it, it's, um, we're competing, and then, you know, once we hire them, many of our subs have positions in all different districts. They might sub in three, four districts, and so it's a matter of making sure that they want to, want to be here because they certainly have an opportunity to work anywhere they want. It's very, very open right now.
Andrew?
So I certainly want to make sure that we're, you know, we're staying competitive, we're able to get some good, some good subs with associate degrees who hopefully might go on to, um, maybe enter our district full-time someday, that's good. Uh, the, the state, um, the state puts, basically, you, you can have an associate degree and take the course, and then you're on basically equal footing with everyone else who has a substitute permit except for certain long-term?
There are two substitute permits. This is the three-year substitute permit, which allows them to substitute for day-to-day and up to forty-five days. The people who have the five-year permit have background in education, and they can sub on long-term leaves, um, you know, as, as long as we, we need. So they're not, they're two different forms of substitute licenses. And then, of course, we have teachers who maintain their regular license, and they can do all, all the work that we need them to do.
Because I'm, I'm interested in whether or not, even though the state has said you can treat all the, you know, consider all, uh, a sub is a sub up to forty-five days, which is a lot. If that's, if that's the bar that we want to do, do we want to have, um, the long-term forty-five day, you know, up to forty-five day assignment, go to an associate degree, um, person who we know cannot become the full-time teacher as opposed to, um, someone who might have a, have a chance to? I just don't, I mean, the, just because the state says that a two-year degree is now equal to a, basically equal to a four-year degree for subbing, do we want to have it be completely equal here? Do we want to have?
Well, it, it is, actually, it isn't equal, because our principals will meet with these folks before they do a long-term subposition. And so, uh, even though somebody even has a bachelor's degree, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean they'll qualify to work in our district, because we check references. The principals meet with, um, their, their, um, substitute teachers before they actually commit to the, um, position. And so there is a check and balance to make sure that we put a good quality people in front of the children for, um, well, even, even for a day, to be honest with you.
Of course, but I, I get the feeling that this, um, and interviews are, interviews are important, but I, I guess I'm still wondering do, you know, should the, should the people with more educational experience be getting the, the first calls, the, in most cases, the no one, the no one longer? And maybe it doesn't make too much of a difference, because we're already short on subs. So maybe I'm talking about a problem that isn't going to happen for a while.
I think when we hire the folk, we haven't hired anybody yet, obviously, because the. I think when we hire the folk, we haven't hired anybody yet, obviously, because we don't have the approval through the job description. But I think we'll watch how the staff who have the associate's degree do in terms of their performance and get feedback from the principals, and, because we'll make sure that they know that the person has the associate degree and that they can give us good feedback. And they do in, in other, you know, for other subs as well. They, they provide feedback, and there's a mechanism in the absence management system that allows the teacher to give feedback, and the sub can also give feedback through that system.
Okay.
Okay, Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren? Hi.
McCoy?
Hi. Karen Six Zero.
All right. And under policies, I move that the district mission policy and strategic roadmap exhibit as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the school board legal status policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move the school board vacancies policy and procedures for filling board vacancies rule as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move the school board officers policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the appointment of school board member representatives policy as presented be approved.
Second?
We missed one, Andrew.
Oh, which one? I move, okay, I move that the district legal council policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the appointment of school board member representatives policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the school board powers and duties policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the adoption, revision, maintenance, dissemination of school board policies and rules policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Sorry. Hi, yes, hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
All right. I move that the administration and the absence of school board policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the suspension of policies policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the school board member authority policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
I want, is this where, is this the one where it talks about the right to put something on an agenda, or is that under an agendas, or is that somewhere else? Is that under the board meetings policy? It's later?
Agenda preparation, that's...
Yes.
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 71.2.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Okay. You motioned, yeah, we seconded. Okay, go ahead, Sandy.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move the school board member orientation policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the school board member compensation expenses policies as presented be approved. What's that?
Did he miss?
Memberships?
He missed N.
I skipped memberships?
Yeah.
He skipped M.
Oh, okay. I move that the school board memberships policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move the school board memberships policy as presented be approved.
We just did that one, N.
So we did that, oh, we did it out of order?
We didn't do N. We didn't vote on N. You need to reread N.
They just reread N. We did M.
We voted on it.
We did M, yes.
Right, we did M.
He just read N.
You read M again, so read N.
Compensation expenses.
N.
Okay, I move that the school board member compensation and expenses policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf? Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I'll just quit doing paper and electronic, I'll just stick with one of that. I move that the school board member behavior and ethical standards policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the school board member conflicts of interest policy as presented be approved.
Second?
Can, I have a question about that. Can you give an example of a conflict, anyone?
Conflict of interest?
Mm-hmm.
Somebody is, well, one of, one might be if you're hired as a co-curricular advisor, and you become a board member, you're getting paid by the district to be that co-curricular advisor, that would constitute a conflict of interest.
What about going the other, backwards, from board to something else? Is there any...
Oh, like something you shouldn't
Right.
get involved in? I mean, it comes up with insurance, but that, you know, when, when, like, if we vote on retiree benefits, and Ed and Chris, sometimes if they're receiving that benefit, would have to abstain.
Okay.
If we're voting on health insurance companies, because Katie and my husband both work for one of the companies, and we, we had to abstain.
So financial gain?
Financial gain, yes, or if you're paid by the district, then it's, you're, you're shifting your working conditions too. But that, you know, most people know that that's a problem. So it's, yeah, it's financial gain. If you ever have questions, feel free to ask, or actually Melissa's the best person to ask, to just have her double-check for you.
Thank you.
Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the school board member electronic communications policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the regular special meetings of the school board policy and procedures for appointing board members to reside over work sessions, meeting rule, as presented be approved.
I think you missed R, right?
I was reading R.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the S's.
Yeah, second? Sandy?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the agenda preparation and dissemination policy as presented be approved.
Second? Is this where you had something in?
Um, yes, just wanted to make sure, just to... My biggest concern was, was the if at all, and again, as I've said before, when I'm not, when I brought this up, it's not about, this doesn't, this doesn't mean that I think Brenda would try to do an end around by saying, well, I can choose to put what meeting on, I choose March 2027 or something. I think between, between the fact that it's clear that a board member, a board member's request won't be denied, and then ultimately, I guess, the workaround, if we have different folks someday, and a president who likes keeping things off the agenda, which has never been a problem, but should that happen someday, two board members have the right to call a meeting if it, if it came down, if it came down to that, they could. So I think this is well, well-covered, so I appreciate the work on that. And again, that's not based on a fear of anything that's a problem. Now, it's looking to a future that may or may not come to bits. Thank you.
Rhonda?
When you say two board members have a right to have an agenda item presented?
One does, but two can call a meeting. But I think that might be in a different policy.
That's why I'm asking you to clarify.
Um, I don't know which one, it used to be in one's, I think it's in 170, that two board members can put it in writing to call a meeting, but I think we just passed that one.
Regular special meetings, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Are you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the rules of order policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the quorum policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the voting method policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Dorf? Hi.
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the school board minutes policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?
Hi.
Becker?
Karen Six Zero.
I move that the public participation at school board meetings policy as presented be approved.
Second? Sandy?
Sitnikah?
Hi.
Maloney?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Dorf?